This time I'll call the two state May tenth twenty twenty-two meeting in the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willie are your supervisor. We have Lisa Smith and Duane Beck from the Auditor's Office and Juan Gokee are Administrative Assistant. First item on the agenda is discussion and possible action toward bids on the Pearson Hall re-roofing project.
At this time, I need some more conversation with the contractor, fair and a little bitter, have a couple more questions before we get everything sealed up.
So you are requesting to table the action on that?
Yes, please.
Does that your motion?
I make the motion.
I would second. You have a motion, a second to table action on the re-roofing project until Larry is has some additional information on on the bid. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, the second item is discussion, possible action to award bids on the Law Enforcement Center Utility Building Concrete Flooring Project.
And I've examined both estimates here and everything is in order and the low bidder is D and T Concrete from Bellevue, Iowa. At twenty-three thousand five hundred.
So is your motion to award the contract?
My motion is to award contracts a little better. The other bid was twenty-four three hundred.
So they're really competitive and I appreciate that and I appreciate that they will put the time and effort in and. And I if if that was a motion, I would second that motion to award it to D and T.
That was a motion in a second to award the contract to D and T. Bellevue, all those in favor? Aye, motion carried. Okay. Want to tell David we're ready for him? Yeah.
Two entrance permits for this morning. The first one is for Oran Incorporated. It is a class residential driveway in Totheburg Township, Section Four, East Side of Hybridge Road. We've got Roger recommended for approval.
I would move to approve. With a motion and a second to approve the residential driveway on the Hybridge Road by Lauren LLC, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And we have a residential permit for Barry Whack, Washington Township, Section Six, on Fourth and Seventh Avenue, West Side Road. It's been reviewed by staff and recommended for approval.
Residential.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the residential permit for Barry Whack, all those in favor? All right, I'm watching Carrie.
Continues on Hundred Fiftieth Street, they've been having some issues with their asphalt plant, which has been slowing them down maybe further along otherwise, but working on the weekends and things.
How is that going? They are resurfacing now then?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. A resident from that area stopped at my house yesterday and said, it's going to be beautiful.
That's what we want is beautiful. Functional, we don't care.
Okay, uh, just on the on a phone?
I can send it to you.
Is cell number, I mean?
We're also sending it to your work.
Yeah, that's fine. D dryer at Jackson County. That Iowa, that too, we.
Okay. I guess. Here at this point, so do you want to do your business, Lisa?
I can. So this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May third twenty twenty-two board proceeding as risen by Auditor Smith and operate publication and official newspapers.
The move second.
Motion and a second to approve the printing of our previous minutes on what was in favor? Aye, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of five hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
So.
I would like in this a brief explanation of that last number, there's one number in there that's a little draw the red flag.
That's the good news to me.
I know.
Three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar payment that we're making this time is our first payment for the loan for the new Law Enforcement Center. If you'll remember last year at budget session, we were allowed to already with the collection of the twenty taxes table twenty-one, twenty-two. We were allowed to to do a debt levy and so we have that money sitting in the bank, we've been collecting that levy from people's property taxes and this is our first payment. So we didn't want to wait any longer, we want to make sure that we get it to where it needs to go in plenty of time and so that's why it is being submitted today for payment. So it is three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars is our first payment for the law enforcement.
That's a yearly payment.
It is. Actually, actually, I think there's another interest payment due in them in six months.
Oh, yeah. And that makes our claims look a lot different and you know, there's eighty thousand dollars worth of gravel in there, so about the claim down to a little over a hundred thousand, which was rather refreshing again.
There's a lot of fuel, you'll notice there's a lot of fuel, there was a lot of rack and and we're paying off our debt already.
It's filling up all barrels.
Yeah.
Just just a special note along with that, maybe now's not really the time, but it's when we're talking about claims, but I did touch, reach out to Henson's campaign or office and campaign or even the right name for that version, but but anyways, to see if when that may be coming or if there was a presentation that she'd like to do or something like that, so we're still waiting to receive that for our ELC Center. And the
More good news.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So with that, I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
When I handed out my packet to you this morning, I handed out two separate letters from the City of Macochacon. They are requesting the board signature on two temporary construction easements, one for the courthouse and the other for the Penrose Annex Property. I probably I'm guessing because the project isn't complete on West Plant, so they would like to have a little more time.
So is this an extent, just an extension on maybe side or something like that?
That would be my guess, I don't know, all I all I can tell you is with the letter that I received in the mail that I have given to you.
An extension of the construction easement.
Yes.
I I would make a motion to approve that.
Motion and a second to approve the extension of the easement, all those in favor? Aye, motion carried.
In my last item that I have been approached by several elected officials and county employees. It does concern Jackson County's mileage reimbursement, right now Jackson County is paying election officials, we paid a mileage to work at the polls on election day. I know you as supervisors and us as county employees, we go to meetings and right now Jackson County's reimbursement rate is forty-five cents a mile and there is some elected officials and employees that would like to know if you would consider raising that.
Do well.
And the federal rate is fifty-eight point five.
Yeah.
The federal rate is?
The federal rate is fifty-eight point five.
Well, we certainly need our volunteers.
Yeah, that affects everybody that you know that comes in, I mean, you're paying meeting, you know, when you have a board or a commission and you have people that are coming to that, they're being paid mileage, I mean, this is.
And they're volunteering for the meeting.
That's correct.
And my truck was kind of full and cost me ninety dollars.
But that's kind of scary anymore with this.
Motorcycle.
We sure, yeah, we do. It's a good idea, yeah.
It's like forty-five miles.
Yeah, but I mean, again, you know, with the volunteers are volunteering their time and that that's the that's the least we can do. Can we, they decided to grow the federal rate and
You can, you can do whatever.
We can establish whatever rate we feel is appropriate. Do you think we need to discuss it or investigate a little more or just go ahead and move ahead?
You know, honestly, we haven't moved up forty-five cents for a very long time. I can't remember when it was anything but forty-five cents.
I guess, you know, I'm I don't need them to hear anymore, I would make a motion to move it to fifty-five.
Effective today?
Yes, sounds fair. I'll admit the second.
We have a motion and a second to increase the mileage reimbursement to fifty-five cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion.
And with that, thank you, and that's all that I have for the board today.
Okay. Are you representing the Needo Valley areas?
Yes.
And Karen is not coming?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm Karen's worst half, so.
Okay. To want to have Dave come back in. I guess whoever your spokesman is, or you can all three come up here and address the board, we're having the engineer come back over.
Good.
Jim is good.
Yeah.
We're gonna let them sit there, David. Everybody like a copy? Questions we have, I guess.
Well, and also.
Okay.
All right.
You just like to introduce yourself for the for the TV and for the board?
Well, yeah, you are on TV, by the way.
Nice. Okay.
You just don't need any here, then you're going to come in.
There you go. I'm Jim Geesland, this is Lanny Teal and Harry Altos who all have property or live down at Needo. And we've talked with a number of people in the area there of seeing if we can develop any kind of a plan to get a hard surface road to get from Saint Ignatius to Hybridge. We understand that, I mean, there's not a ton of money available like every other place. And we're just kind of wondering if we can maybe put some sort of a program together that if we can do research or get a grant or anything to, we're just starting here, I guess, is the best way to say it. We already contacted, one of our guys down in the area has contacted the Jackson de Bue County Development Office and Harry, did you talk with Dave very good today?
Yeah.
Okay, I did. And they suggested we talk to supervisors first. And I guess our kind of our first question is if we can find any kind of funding to do this project. Is it okay with you guys? David, you know, ask them it on.
Sure, it's a it's about two point three miles from where the pavement ends in Saint Ignatius to the entrance to the Needo Valley. It's got pretty good topography, it's going to be an expensive project, but probably a fun engineering project. You're looking at over a two million dollar project to do the entire length and that doesn't really include drainage or like things too that we may need some right away because the slopes are going to be pretty high, that might have to come down outside of the right way type of existing right away.
We just did a box cover on that road, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They were talking blacktop?
Yeah, okay.
So I guess, with that being said, David, I mean, I know we have talked before about some of these projects and other people have come in from different communities that are not towns, I guess, if you want to call it. Including Leisure Lake where there's over three hundred homes, but I mean, we've also always talked about tearing it out, putting them a cadon base, is have we changed, kind of changed our direction, I mean, that all had to do with FEMA somewhat. I mean, their standards, so if anything disastrous ever happened, we would get some type of funding because of that. Now, to me, a lot of these roads have been there for a hundred years and they're they're compacted, they are what they are. Most of them are wide enough, so I don't know your take on that.
Well, most of them are wide enough, trouble is that with the significant vertical curves through there that I doubt it's going to require you to take out some of those hills to give you a little more sight distance over them when you put down pavement.
That is an issue once you do that, that they have to
Your speed will go up once you hard surface it, granted, I know they're going through their pre-boat clip. There today, I've been out there, it's got about a hundred and I did a count out there in September. Granted, it was probably past the prime season, about a hundred and fifty vehicles, I dot Scott counts out there that put it about two hundred and twenty. So I mean, it's still technically below the volume of what is typically considered a low volume road, which is about four hundred.
And I'm sure that volume changes in the middle of summer.
Because the properties have been converted to
Right.
year-round use now and and it's not just weekend homes. So, you know, there's a lot of dots out there, I I've seen it and things. It's a great project, it's just finding the the money to do it and.
I I would tend to agree, here's my question to you or any three of you, you know that we do have a five-year road plan?
Yes.
And, hey, I mean, not to puff him up or anything, but Dave gave a very good presentation this last five-year road program plan on the plan for the five-year, and and I would like to have you, if there's a copy of that, to take a look at that and and review what is all going on in the county and the and the amount of money that we spend from the last twenty years.
We we have, I've looked it up there. And we've kind of we've kind of reviewed that before we started anything and we were a little late to get to to the program or to the
Yeah, we didn't have anybody, so, yeah.
So, you know, we just kind of threw this together, though, well, we need to start somewhere, but we're not sure where or what to do and rather than, I guess, we just come and start asking questions and know what direction that we could try going, I guess.
Well, I guess that is the direction to approach us and and if there's funding to be available other than what we don't know about.
Well, your your item five, you're only receiving any money for infrastructure bill to better America money. We aren't.
This is
We had our our RPA meeting last week and so far, we're not going to, we're not seeing anything.
And in fact, all they managed to do is increase the paperwork that we have to do because they're now more federalized projects.
Surprise.
Anybody heard about the weight limiting going up to? And then there's the there's that just throws another wrench in the stuff, it's building stronger to carry overweight trucks.
It is a farm-to-market designated roadway.
That is correct, yeah, yes, it is.
And part of this came up because we knew this infrastructure bill was out there and somebody printed it out and it says it's all grant money, so it's like, well, if it's grant money, that means somebody has applied for, I don't know if
Well, it's it's typical highway funds that it's just more money technically than what you get today. But it comes down to about ten percent, it's administered by the Regional Planning Commission in Dubuque and the procedures for applying for projects and the state criteria and federal criteria criteria for what the roads have to look like in in conditions that they'll consider, you know, collector functional class, farm-to-market and things like that. Unfortunately, it's not the the full load of money that we hoped it was going to be. And
So basically, the office personnel take up the front of the extra money that was figuring out that
So we're required by the state, if you upgrade a road like that, to make sure that the levels of ditches are certain grade and all roads and curves. We could just go up there and put a blacktop.
So so does the state come up and decide how that's going to be done?
They have to, they have to review and approve the plans.
Yeah.
Because we all heard on the radio and on TV and in the newspapers about this wonderful infrastructure bill that was going to come so you can improve bridges and roads and and it just hasn't happened.
Greatly, if I'm wrong, David, did I read right in our audit that like last year our revenue was down like one point or at least a two, one point five, but one point three of it or something like that was money from the Transportation Department that we did not receive for the
I think I think we, you know, did all right with respect to the gas tax and things like that, it wasn't heating, heating, we did have some additional money to do some special projects in the county that aren't through I dot, like the repaving of Cottages Shallow and we want to get to Summit Street and get that done. The problem is, we just have a lot of existing surface roads that people are calling for us to reconstruct, resurface. Hundred and fiftieth being one.
If you ever drove a hundred and fiftieth from S Gate up to Iron Hill.
And Z three four out of
They press people out there, just you made it.
So there's a lot of existing surfaces that that we would like to get squared away before we were to add inventory to that.
And one one time we did talk about special assessments, but actually, that was more for, I think, we sure, you know, Left Lake Catfish.
You know. Well, like, and there was also the subdivision over on three ninety fifth side thing where there was, yeah, there was like seven million dollars.
Right.
Uh, that was one of the three ninety fifth pass of course.
Well, not three ninety, it's three, is it three eightieth, the ones that cuts across? Then it goes out past to the out to the shrine out there, there are two.
Oh, yes, I know what you mean, yeah. So one of our questions was obviously, and I don't, it's been done a long time ago, three ninety fifth there, that leads to a mud road. Was there grant money there or how how did money get proved?
That's actually farm-to-market road too, I think somebody told me.
Once you get by Smith's Ferry, though, there's like ten residents.
Right.
It's kind of strange to be driving on a highway and all of a sudden you're down to dirt roads. And you know, a couple million dollar bridge or whatever, does that, is was that grant money or we're just curious?
Before, anyway.
Before me too.
Yeah, before me.
Centerville Road was another one we were looking at, but was there federal grant money involved with Centerville Road to
I agree that one. That was proud, that was farm-to-market funds.
Okay.
That were, you know, funded through the state's programs and things.
So does that work where you every year they put so much into that fund and then after you get enough built up?
Yes.
Okay. Which one was it, Seating Ridge Road, we had I don't know, half dozen people were more from there and our decision was we were going to take that back to gravel because it was so bad. And they passed the gas tax that very same day, raise the gas tax by ten cents and that gave us the money to do that.
Which one was that? So you're going from Bellevue up to Seating Ridge, it goes up past.
Oh, just up Detroit.
Yeah.
Okay. And this is something, instead of just raising it ten cents, they should have raised it, then every year go up a penny more or something to keep up with the cost of stuff because
Well, it's not only that, the inflation, we now with the our gas tax doesn't keep up with it and asphalt's going up, nothing is and asphalt's tied to petroleum, of course. And then four dollars and ten cents a gallon, then then our projects all increase.
Yeah. So if it is a farm-to-market road, it does it does have a precedence over for funding, if I understand you correctly, Dave?
It could be funded.
I mean, somewhere down the road possibly or whatever, okay, okay.
It's just, you know, what what else aren't you going to do then with it?
Okay.
Because right now on the five-year plan, we have the resurfacing of Y sixty-one, Z thirty-four, Brinear Road. You get to the other segments of Hundred and Fiftieth Street. We're preparing segments of that in Andrew this summer. It's pretty bad there, just kind of spot failure fixing, so.
So somebody was talking, I don't know, we talked to so many people that you guys didn't experiment to quote project, was it Leisure Lake, maybe?
We did do what, seven hundred and eight hundred feet over there up to the
That was on that.
That was on three ninety.
Like, don't get north of Bellevue, listen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It didn't really
No, we two went in over Leisure Lake, though, here last Yeah, I think that's what they told us that was, but is that something that's a possibility there? Oh, that hill. That was this That's regular blacktop. Yeah. And that's that hill's been a problem since I can remember that hill being a mess thirty years ago because it gets washed boards and the bus drivers just saying they come down there and school bus.
They just up there and nail trucks.
We had, we had a bid come in that was sixty or seventy thousand dollars low and we're like, hmm. And we looked at that hill up seven hundred foot and that pretty much covered it, so we just threw it that way to fix that problem.
I think all the bus drivers are complaining about ours too. So I guess that's one too, that we did not rebuild that road, I mean, we just went over that road, so it is kind of an experiment to see what what does.
Well, and you know, the hybrid road's been there for like, he said, I I talked to no guy, he thought they'd put that in the fifties. When it was just kind of a during order, very narrow road that they rebuilt that up. So I I believe it's a very long time and you're right, I think there is a good service or a good base there, obviously, you know, with the fifty-some years, so. Is there a way to just go over with blacktop and reduce the speed limit to thirty-five or something?
You still have to take those, some of those sub bases and things for it.
Yeah. On a weight limit, what are they, what are they going to or? They want to raise everything up to ninety thousand. Year round. That's the
Instead of just a field of the fall.
Yeah.
So that would really be bad because then when your roads are wet and less structurally
Yeah.
sound, you're going to have these heavy vehicles.
Well, like I told you last week, Dave, the hybrid road compared to what it was three or four years ago.
Yeah.
It has come a long way with the grating and the water's not running down alongside on the roadway, it's getting off into the ditches the way it's supposed to and
Yeah.
And we certainly appreciate that, but the dust is yeah, and a couple of those farms sits right on the road.
Oh, yeah. Are they doing dust control or not?
So.
A couple over there. We do that on the road, I'm on a gravel road and it seems to carry over pretty good. Whereas we don't have, I'm on two hundred and twenty thirds. Oh, sixty-four out of town, the car road to the right, I mean, it's only maybe half, not even half mile out of town, but we do, I mean, there's a bunch of houses through there and we do most, the first part isn't done, but it kind of travels down and it helps. What are you using?
Calcium chloride.
No, I think it's a tree sap or something.
Okay, okay, we do that, we used to do that at Needo, but now last fall, we put our first lift of blacktop in in Needo, the association property, not the Needo Valley Road coming in on a hybrid road, but we use a tree sap for I don't know, five or six years, I think, down down there and it it did help, we put two applications on a year, but I have a little potty farm up on St. Catherine's Road in Dubuque County, I live in Needo. But some neighbors up there got permission to do about a quarter, three eighths of a mile of of dust and they're using, I think they're using calcium chloride and it holds up real well and
That's up to the individuals to do that, something
Right.
And the cost on mine is three hundred and twenty-six dollars to do two hundred foot. So that's from a hundred and sixty-five dollars per hundred.
We were spending about eight hundred to a thousand.
Well, some years it worked really good, some years it didn't, so they want to change mixtures and drivers or something.
Yeah, if you depend upon
Who did it?
Who did it or how soon the rains come after you do it.
Oh, that's nice if they get out with it, I mean, I always seem to go out ahead of time, they know when they're coming, they grade it up and, you know, get enough loose stuff and fine stuff on top, so it really soaps in and creates nice So in your guys' opinions with these grants, you know, obviously we printed out, there's, I don't know, there are fifteen of them, six billion for this, six billion, and tells you what they're for, some of them are for rural roads, non-community roads, but it says they're grants, is that something that has to be applied to or is that something that's automatically given out to the states or?
No, if it was green, you have to apply for it.
Okay. Well, that's what we figured it was too and I talked to somebody from the IC or the
ECA.
Yeah, ECA.
ECA.
And, you know, obviously they have grant writers there that can do that, so our question was if we would go to that and get somebody to do it and that money was appropriated, would it be used for that road if that was our intention and that's what we went after it for? Well, I would say that's what you're applying for, that's what it would be, but it still has to come to you guys. Obviously, we can do that, but they said that the money still goes to the county, to the supervisors to say.
But if it was written for a specific project, I don't think the board has to say we're going to use it.
But that's what we were asking, okay.
We'd have to have your blessing to even have somebody do a grant application. We'd have to have your blessing to even have somebody do a grant application, so.
Well, I don't think you'll get any argument from this side of the table.
Okay, I mean, we're all up for improvement, so trust me, I mean, if the money's there and we start, um. Taxing ability to do more here and there, and we're gonna.
You know, we would love to see it, you know.
Right, well, we just wanted to make sure that we didn't. Step on toes or end up with something and then.
You wanna do with it, the better you are, yeah, just keep bombing the way I did.
So we're, we get a little help, Randy Bender has a friend who was the chief of staff for Branstead, Mike Busso. And he's actually a representative now and. And talking to him, you know, he was gonna help out with, hey, talk to this person, this is what we want to get with, I mean, he has a lot of connections in Des Moines. And he thought there was possibly some money available, so. But he said that now it has to go back to your county supervisors, yeah, so, okay.
Well, we would certainly support.
You tell him to throw it all this way that he wants to throw it.
Contact with our governor's office, so. I mean, we have our fingers crossed, we know it's. We know it's a long shot, but if we don't start now.
Well, it's very. You know, that little piece of blacktop out of Leisure Lake, talk about a long shot, there's one lady showed up, her five year old program, and that was her request. And you know, we wrote it down, it just came around and.
But they've been coming every year.
So speaking of that, that's what we need to do, or how do we get on that five year program?
Oh, to the paper, it's for everybody.
Your best bet is to get all of the people that live along that road to sign a petition, submit it to the county engineer's office. And when we have our five year road plan, we discuss it, somebody from your area should be there to present to the board, um, about. Why you think this should happen and then we look at that, the county engineer makes a recommendation to the, to the board as to what should be. Added to the five year road plan, and then the board approves that or makes their own recommendations.
But it's a public meeting, I mean, it's open to everybody.
No, I, okay, yeah, I mean, we used to have it at city hall, and then we had it at fairgrounds one year, and last year we had it right here, but it doesn't.
Year before we had it at Pearson Hall, and we had one person from the public came, so you don't need Pearson Hall for one person. Less than three of us and engineer and his assistant.
We also recognize that there's a possibility of. Further development along a road, uh, I happen to live on the portion of St. Catherine's Road that's blacktop. And, uh, and there's quite a few houses and subdivisions along St. Catherine's Road in Dubuque County. Where it's blacktop and there's kind of farm available on the gravel part of it, just north of York County line. That I think would have sold in a heartbeat, it has a view of the river, but it's on gravel and, but, uh. I've had three different people in the last two years contact me about a field I have alongside St. Catherine's Road. It's not for sale, but people looking for a place to build. Kind of found out, tricked the time to find out who owned that piece of property and contacted me, so there is a. Economic.
There's some of it is speculation, of course, you can't, can't speculate whatever we do, but there's certainly is a demand for.
That's what I was just trying to point out.
It's just morning in our, in, in David's, we had two residential permits for in the country that people, people do like to be out and about.
Well, there's a multimillion dollar home going up on hybrid road right now, just outside of Saint Ignatius. But, uh, but he's only a couple hundred feet off of the blacktop, so it's not that big of a deal.
Dust control there.
It sits far enough back that it not, it doesn't issue, so.
Well, we sure appreciate you guys working. One of the questions I had, and this is Mike Busso again, he says, and he's been down many, plenty of times, and he knows the area and he thinks it's. Beautiful place, and he said, is there any chance of connecting St. Catherine's Road coming down Saint Ignatius, make a loop that would be for. Uh, recreation vehicles, bicycles, motorcycles, is there?
A trail? Yeah, there's some money out there for trails.
It would make a, all the way from Dubuque or Key West, it would make a hard surface. All the way to Saint Ignatius Loop or Bernard Loop or.
That's something you could talk to ECIA about also, because they did get some money. And they're gonna take, uh, applications, and I believe they said you could get up to two hundred and fifty thousand for some tor- sort of a trail.
Destination Iowa is giving the grants a hundred million dollars. But, and that would be, that would qualify for that.
Are we talking a separate path or are you talking shoulders on a paved road?
They did pave the shoulders from Dubuque to Bellevue.
They did, yeah.
That was all part of that project, right? Approaching, we're talking to him, but anyway. And we talked today higher about it, which I know Dave was very much involved with that project when they did it, so.
So there's a road through there now or not, where you're talking?
Yeah, it's a, it's a county road. But what is it, another mile and a half of Dubuque County then would have to get involved, right?
Yeah, when we approached that about it about five or six years ago, we had half of the money pledged privately to continue. St. Catherine's Road through York County line, it's two miles, I think, mile and a half or two miles, and we had, we had a good chunk of it. Fledged privately, and, uh, at that time, they were talking about taking St. Catherine's Road back to gravel. So we had, uh, everybody along the road, we met with our supervisors and whatever, and they did wind up. Blacktop. Resurfacing.
That was seal coat. Took out and put blacktop.
Yeah, so that's, that's very nice.
But that was my question, because they didn't do, besides changing what five culvers maybe here, they did absolutely nothing to the shoulders. And them shoulders are straight down.
No, they did, uh.
It is no different what they did to Massey Road, you know what they did there, they just went over that, and they're, you know, they're in the shoulder there.
So that's one questioning why in Jackson County you'd have to do that.
Well, I can say in the past that it's been policy of maybe the previous engineers to do it to deal FEMA standards.
If you're gonna, if the state's gonna be involved and they review it, they have requirements that.
Yeah.
Things be this wide.
Yeah, I was just curious that.
And shoulders be this wide and not be soaks and things, if you're using strictly local dollars and things, you can do things a little differently. Which is.
Cause very, I would guess that hybrid road is ten foot wider than what's in Catherine. That's a pretty narrow road and they just right at the top of that. But it was.
That Massey Road might have been an emergency situation though, because the roadway was eroded and it.
I was looking at these project, different projects, the Swiss Valley is the same way.
Right, yeah, I mean, you go up there, it's the same, that's narrow, yeah.
That's what I.
And they didn't do anything, and that's why I was questioning why we could do some of that too, but.
Yeah, me too.
It all comes down to this, so.
Well, thank you very much for.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time and for what you do.
Keep us updated.
Try to support you any way we can.
All right, thank you.
Maybe you'll get some traction with that.
Yeah, that was my push, I, I ran that by, whatever his name was, that Randy Bender has. And really, I think, uh, the way bicycling has evolved and got so popular in the last ten years and, uh. Last week, there is a, there's a Davenport Club that comes up to Dubuque every year, and a bunch of those will actually ride the gravel back.
We've had people come out, like from Cedar Rapids to Todd Fish Hallup for the music, gravel roads on bikes, I'm like. And that last stretch going out there is terrible because there's hundreds of cars going down, I mean, you can't see where the shoulder is, but it does.
Okay, next on the agenda is, you know, booking our executive assistant.
Back memories of our gravel road, somebody come by and just stop your bike and hold your grass and do the dust.
Listen for more to come, make sure there weren't more coming.
That was a driveway, because it was just over the crest of the hill, you'd come up there and you'd drop your window or whatever and just listen. Because if they came over the hill, they'd nail you.
Thank you.
Don't take a left.
We called on you, Jack called on you.
Distracted by getting addresses and phone numbers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, calendar this week, um, four o'clock this afternoon is McHogan River Watershed Management. Um, executive meeting by Zoom for Larry. Wednesday, May eleventh, at nine AM is, um, Jack is gonna be on K V Q's Just Talk. Um, from ten, at ten o'clock, Jack has a zero to five and sixty minutes meeting by Zoom. I had Mike down for the Eastern Iowa Tourism Association meeting in Cedar Rapids, which I'm not sure he's going to, but it's still on the calendar. At eleven thirty on Wednesday is the Mississippi Valley Workforce Lunch and Learn, uh, which is by Zoom for Jack, and that's the one where Laurie Ehlum is gonna be the speaker. Um, three thirty on Wednesday is our work session on the Destination Iowa Grant Project with the city of McHogan, and that'll be for all of you. Thursday, May twelfth.
I'm sorry, is that in the basement or where?
It's in the down, it's downstairs. Um, from noon to seven on Thursday is the Isaac's Executive Board Retreat in Waverly for Larry. And at ten AM is the Iowa DHS Council Meeting for Jack, and I haven't got information on how. I assume it's gonna be by Zoom, because they haven't sent me any information yet, so. Friday, May thirteenth, from seven to ten is the last part of the Isaac's Executive Board Retreat in Waverly for Larry. And at ten AM is Southern Judicial Department Corrections Meeting in Davenport for Larry, if you can get there, but I don't think you can get there by ten. Okay, all right. You were the only one, right?
I think they moved it next week.
Monday, May sixteenth, at seven thirty AM is Early Childhood Iowa Executive Board Meeting by Zoom for Jack. From eleven to twelve thirty is the Together We Build Groundbreaking Ceremony, um, at the Fairgrounds. And you can add in there that at nine thirty will be the groundbreaking ceremony, um, for the new law enforcement center at that site.
That's on Monday.
Monday, this, everything's on Monday the sixteenth, everything. Nine thirty for that one, correct. At one o'clock is a Waste Authority of Jackson County meeting for Mike, that will be in the basement also. At three o'clock is a Regional Governing Board Meeting in Davenport for Jack. And at five o'clock is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Board Meeting by Zoom for Jack. At six thirty is an Eastern Iowa Mental Health and Disability Services, um, member meeting for all the member counties in Davenport. So that will be for all of you, and tentatively, there's a Together We Build meeting at seven o'clock that night, but I haven't heard for sure whether they're going to do that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, May seventeenth at nine AM. That afternoon at two o'clock is a Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO Meeting in Muscatine for Jack. At six o'clock that night is a Conservation Board Meeting for Larry, and that I think starts at Hurstville, and then they go on a tour. Blacktop and then end up at. Also, um, Monday, Tuesday, the seventeenth, seven o'clock is a Board of Health Meeting. Here's a business for today, I'm looking for permission, you have your folders fireworks permit for Tom Yearwood.
Motion to approve, second. The motion is second to approve the fire permit, fireworks permit for, um, Tom Yearwood, all those in favor?
It starts at four o'clock, he says he's getting daytime fireworks this year, so. I asked you about the time and he said, no, I've got daytime.
Might have been his last year, I heard a couple of bangs, it sounded like a shotgun in my backyard, I just kind of freaked out, like, what the hell's going on here? I stepped outside the door. All right.
Yeah, this is why we do this notification, the permit of the notifications, so. People are calling the Sheriff's Department.
I did call, and I'm like, wait, maybe, and I heard it a couple more times, no, maybe this is.
All right, that's all I have for you today.
Any, uh, Board of Commission reports? I did, uh, attend the, the conference that Vera French had last Friday down in Davenport, and. It was, it was wonderful. Both of the speakers were, were really, really good, I thought, while I was listening to it. Um, especially the morning session, the woman that was there, um, everybody that works for the county should attend. It really was, it was dealing with stress and all of this stuff that we all seem to have a, a problem dealing. And, um, the lady that presented it actually works for Vera French, and, um, she's worked. I believe she said she's worked there for forty seven years. And her presentation was wonderful, um, I tried to take a lot of notes, but I. Fortunately, about halfway through the day, they said they were going to be sending us out all of the slide, all of the material. So then I eased up. Um, Luanne did print it off for me, fifty two pages of, of, of material, but it, it was, it was really. And there was a, a really nice groupie, nice, nice crowd. The only thing is, I'd never been to the, um, uh, Isle of Capri Conference Center. So I parked where usually you park when you go to the casino, and I didn't set a casino and hotel and. Well, the conference center is attached, but it's about a block. I kept looking, it said North Tower, and I went to the desk and I said, how do I get to North Tower, they told me, so I got there. And I went up to the third floor and it was all hotel rooms, you know, I thought, okay, so I went back down, I finally did find my way. But I couldn't believe how, I mean, it was, um, a skywalk, but. I'll tell you, it was, it was a long way down.
That happened to me up here at the high school for the. The N R meeting or something for whatever it was, and they said it was at the school, uh, university park or. Clinton, Clinton Community College Park, and I thought that was attached to the back of school, so I go in the school. I started walking around school and I'm up and down, and I'm like, where is this place? And finally, I ran into somebody in the music room, and it's, oh, no, it's out there, and I'm like. Yeah, separate building on the east side, so I came back, well, I guess I walked out around, but I took the long, long way around to get there.
But it really was an excellent session. Um, we do have three work sessions this afternoon, about two work sessions, um, after our board meeting is over, one with Becky Chape and Human Resource. Uh, and Jim Cracker, Crocker, and, uh. Discuss personnel matters, and then we have, uh, another meeting with Becky Chapin, Human Resource Administrator to discuss personnel matters. So we have two meetings following this, but they're just work sessions, so, um, is there any other business to come before the meeting today? That was second time, we have a motion and a second to adjourn our, our meeting this morning, all those in favor? Uh, motion carrying, meeting is adjourned.